Ladies and gentlemen, prayer.
Hey, we thank you for bringing us here tonight. Please help us go through this meeting with an open mind. Please help this parish so that people will listen to each other and learn the truth. Could you just tell my prayer?
Our prayers are allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Brittany Ramsey. Bo Gartner. Melinda Ballard.
Here.
Erin Glass.
Here.
Maria Bass.
Here.
Gary Castles.
Here.
Johnny Fallon.
Here.
First on the agenda is executive committee report. Johnny?
Uh, we are up from last year at this time, twenty-three thousand fifty-five dollars, so in taxes. So, that's a nine point twenty-six percent. So, you're doing so much better than last year.
So, then the favor for the minute.
All three minutes left on the table.
All favor. At this point, we're gonna need to recognize Brittany Russian as our November employee of the month.
Thank you guys for having me tonight. I wanted to read a little bit about what a few folks at the school had to say about Ms. Russian. Said Brittany is an amazing addition to our school. She was an incredible fourth grade ELA teacher who brought books to life, and now she's a supportive literary coach. She's one of the most organized people I know and is talented with all things technology. She's a team player and does everything with a smile on her face. She is willing to lend a helping hand to all the staff and does so much to help wherever she can. She is a true leader and bright light in our building. Brittany leads with kindness, dedication, and teamwork. Her positive attitude and work ethic motivates those around her to do their best. She models what it means to be a true team player. She is humble, hardworking, and committed to making a difference in the lives of students and college alumni. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Brittany Russian.
We appreciate your service.
Thank you.
She's also helping out in the classroom right now, too, right?
Yes, she will.
I would.
Moving along to P. Review and consider approval of policy update for Fourth Amendment policy, education of students with exceptionalities.
Come on, let Rebecca.
So, um, yeah, this is a state law that changed this year. The, this policy from Fourth Amendment is really just an update. It's a little misleading because it says education of students with exceptionalities, but what it's really about is seclusion and restraint. And the, really, the only changes are, it goes into a lot of detail about what seclusion and seclusion rooms are and what mechanical restraints are. Those are gonna be at the bottom of page two and on here, page three. As a district, we don't have any seclusion rooms and we don't use any mechanical restraints. So, while we appreciate the state clarity on the definition of what these things are, it's not something that we use in practice in our classrooms as a district. You know, again, this is straight out of the law. We didn't add or change anything, so, um, most of it is exactly the same, the reporting and everything, and all of our employees at the start of every school year, principals go over these policies with them and they sign off that they understand. So, but this is, the main updates are, I've highlighted the differences. It's really definition of seclusion, what, what is okay in a seclusion room, definition of restraint, what, what is okay as a mechanical restraint, and the difference between sensory space and seclusion space.
Brittany. I did grill her yesterday, about thirty minutes of good grilling, so even though we didn't need us the policy, I concur that this, this would need to be, Rebecca, appreciate your call, and thank you for having me call. She realized that there's a whole lot of questions that can be asked, so I think she's aware of some of the circumstances and situations, so I recommend that.
We did talk and we did grill them.
But she, she can tell you that it was, it was worth it. It wasn't the grilling that's the way you would think it was. It was just questions, you know, that were posed that's outside of the box, 'cause I think as a parent, I think as a policymaker, I think as an administrator, it's all those things together, but she did a good job with it and, uh, maybe it's just a complicated situation, yeah, and so Rebecca, good job.
So, we've got a motion to approve this policy. Financial update.
Uh, I M E. You've got five pages in front of you. March was going as expected. We're currently, I mean, expenses were fortunately down to a hundred forty thousand dollars compared to last year. Unfortunately, revenue is down to a hundred forty-six thousand. That's as expected, your M E for decrease. From the page to sales tax, again, like Johnny said, we're doing quite well in sales tax, we're up ninety-one thousand on revenue, and expenses are down fourteen thousand dollars, so that one's a favorable change of a hundred and six thousand for the year so far. Lunch fund is not as great. Last year, we were a hundred and fifty-four thousand ahead at this point last year, and currently, we're ahead a hundred thousand dollars, so down fifty-four thousand dollars. That's a combination of low revenue and higher costs. And then finally, maintenance. We talked about that a lot last month with a lot of repairs, so that one is probably a typical year, but it's way worse than it was last year, because last year was really a great, we're not having a lot of repairs. And then the final page is balance sheet. Just let me know where, what we have on balance sheet. We have cash, it's a hundred and one million dollars. That's all funds. That's not just your, uh, total assets of nine million dollars and total abilities, we're at twenty-two thousand dollars. Fund balance is eight twenty-five hundred and fifty. Uh, and again, that's all funds. That's not just your, um, the audit's going well. We'll probably be done, but they will be done probably next week, so hopefully we'll get it reported next, next month. And the stipend checks are being paid out tomorrow, the two thousand, one thousand dollar checks that the state divided for all teachers and support staff. So, that's all I have.
District leaders update.
Swally, you're the first one.
Well, like I said yesterday, it was an honor to financially support the breakfast, which I think went very well. That was the easy part, hand everything. Now, I thought it was for the team, the whole team to set it up, get it together, pull it together, and, um, and dissemble it. Everybody seemed to work together on it and so it didn't seem quite as hard when you have people working together as such.
The students really did a good job.
They did. They did. And I did put a copy of the annual report that we gave out to everybody in your overtuys.
Right, right. And we, we supplied that as well. That group does a lot. Y'all will realize that, you know. But anyway, that, like you said, that was the easy part, part was for the whole team to come together to make it a fabulous breakfast. Yes, I heard while I didn't feed that, and, um, I think that, um, next year, if we can expand it a bit more in the community and, um, the lovely parents, parent leading, we can continue to finance it, because you can't buy food unless it's a parent leading. Diet for like, for trucks and all that. And it's just key, so we did it. We did it. I don't think I hate, um, the little souvenirs didn't get here to U S, the U S brought them a little late because the day before they come like, Tuesday, of course it's Veterans Day, everything was closed, and so they brought them to us. I'll have the breakfast over, so.
We have to make some special deliveries, so.
Exactly. We have for next year.
Follow us, yeah.
That's all.
All right, thank you. All right. Monica?
Um, everything's going really well with all of our programs. I'm doing a major testing thing. We rolled three pre-patriots today, so that's a hit. The biggest thing we thought is the Dolly Parton Imagination Library I told y'all about is approved. We're in the process of, um, they're doing the logos. We've called parish on them. We could fly ours out and get parents to start registering for that. So, if you're, from the day they're born through their fifth birthday, they'll receive a book every month. It's a hardback book mailed to their address, addressed to them, and it has their name on it. So, we're talking, I don't know how that automation works, but every book gets sent with their name mailed to them, and they'll get one from the time they roll. If you were, you know, pregnant and had your child enrolled at birth through their fifth birthday, they'll get a book every week.
They feel like they're special.
Straight from Dolly. That's great. Thank you. Ms. Wells?
Not a lot going on. We will, um, scores will be officially released next Thursday, so I'll have S B S and all of that at the December meeting.
Ms. Ray?
Well, mine's pretty blank right now, but I do want you guys to know that, um, at the very beginning of December through this grant, we have a group coming from all over the state of other people who are stakeholders in the grant from other parishes and folks from Baton Rouge, and they're gonna come to eat lunch at the cafe, but they're also gonna watch a student panel where we're gonna have some kids talk about how the transitions program has engaged them, and they're gonna come see, hopefully meet Cluck Norris and, um, uh, yeah.
Have you shown them the shirts?
No, no, it was probably in here. Um, I, I just have to plug Cluck Norris every time I get a chance. I just love saying it. But, um, yeah, hopefully the greenhouse, I think, I think we said next week. Um, hopefully it'll be assembled. They'll start on the assembly for that because Mr. Burkhart can't hardly walk around in his, um, welding shop right now because there's a thirty by fifty greenhouse in pieces inside his welding shop, so hopefully we will get that taken care of. But we, we do have a big group and I'm really excited to show off all the things that our kids have done and all the things that the faculty at the high school and our C T E folks, everybody else have kind of let me do with all these crazy projects that I've had, so. Oh, and the kiln came. Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, so we're, we're ready to start making some ceramics, right?
Ceramic, a kiln. We, we bought a kiln, so we're gonna start making ceramics that our kids are going to paint to sell. Yes, so we've got a little, paid by grants. This is all part of this grant, the greenhouse and all that, farms and. It's a grant. It's all the grants.
Don't they have chips?
That's Cluck, Cluck Norris is the name of the.
I, I actually, I was on a federal reporting call in the middle of the day today, and they were asking me about some of the things that, you know, what I had bought and, and that sort of thing, and she said, well, tell me about some of your purchases, and I was, I mean, are you asking about big things or are you asking me why I spent forty-six dollars on lavender hens? And she said, you want hens? I said, well, nobody said I couldn't buy hens, and she said, okay. Yeah, you know, she, she said, I thought working out, and I was like, well, we're now got boiled eggs on our salads in the cafe because we're trying to, you know, make this all cyclical with our work, so it's, um, it's fun.
How many chickens, how many chickens you have?
Oh.
It's about five roosters out there.
Yeah, it's mostly roosters.
They, they, they actually took that. I bought him an incubator, so they actually put the eggs in the incubator and had the chickens, and we ended up with four roosters.
That happens.
And as, as a city girl, I'm learning a lot about this myself, because every now and then Jacob will, yeah, like, the first day they laid eggs, he said, um, he said, do you want these? And I said, can you eat the first batch? He just looked, and I said, I didn't know. I didn't know what, yeah, do it, hope you're trying. Yeah.
The ideas just keep going, because when we found out they named the rooster Cluck Norris, they came up with a design for a T-shirt, and now they are getting a screen print, so as well as the pottery that they're gonna be making, they're going to sell T-shirts of Cluck Norris. And so all this is a part of their enterprise that they're going to generate money. Are you gonna go get the shirt?
Because you have extra roosters. If you die, you still got other roosters.
We got backup roosters. And they crow all day long.
I'll park over there.
So, that's why it's not fresh yet, but this is what it's. I have a friend who is pretty good with picking out colors and stuff, and, um, she was like, oh, no. And she was like, oh no, this is the color you want. So this is the... I mean, it's...
If you'll watch the high school page, Jenny and her carpentry kids are making reindeer. They're doing like, it's going to be like, she didn't know if she was going to do two, three, four, but they're making like tabletop reindeer when they're going to have a sleigh and they're going to hook it all together and paint them and they're going to sell them.
That is awesome. That is awesome. We've got so many good things going on.
Are the kids putting here the greenhouse or?
No.
It's mess. Okay, Brian, talk that.
I don't know. We did a bit of the website recently. There's new pictures, new stuff like that on it. If you want to go, there's like 100 and something pictures now, so have fun sitting through all of them. I know we also got back EF funding for some projects that are happening next year, so.
That was a massive grant that they wrote.
Yeah, it was, it was big. And the plan for that is to run network to buildings that don't currently have it, like outline buildings and stuff.
All right, Ms. Berria?
The state released the beginning of the year scores and the state was at 50%. Caldwell, K and R was at 54. So we're excited about that. And then we're also going to begin our middle of the year testing next month.
Two weeks of December.
They do. They have two weeks in December to get all of their literacy and all of their numeracy testing done. So thank you.
Nobody gets sick. Yeah, I'm going to need everybody to, in their prayers, to pray that we don't get sick, the testing team doesn't get sick and children come to work. So we can accurately report. But yeah, testing's coming up fast. But I just want to, I don't really have anything to report other than there's some exciting things going on in our classrooms. The work that we're doing with co-teaching this year, I have to just really brag on a pair of professionals and the work that they're doing in the classroom. I kind of talked a little bit about it at the breakfast yesterday. But they're doing some amazing things. We have some great parishes that can, they've been here, they understand the content just as much as some of the teachers do. And they know how to reach our kids. And they've been more than willing to step up and to do. And we have some amazing teachers that are just going the extra mile for our kids and are really coachable and just really responding to some of the strategies that we've asked them to implement. I'm very proud of our leaders for keeping that going and monitoring that and helping us making our job easier.
Sandra?
I don't really have anything. Nothing new. We're excited going on with the state kids.
Well, tomorrow night we play Richwood, who's involved in the first round of the playoffs. And if you haven't seen, the track has been repaired and it looks really good. So if you wanted to see that, it looks really good. The high school robotics team is traveling to LSU on Sunday to do a scrimmage, their first scrimmage. So this is exciting to get prepared for the competition season, which will begin in December. So we're excited about that. And then the junior high robotics also is getting ready for their competition season also. And then we're in the middle of junior high basketball. And just like, I'll go along with what Kim said, you know, just our leaders and our teachers and parishes are working very hard to really learn how to, especially in the secondary world, it's a little bit different in the co-teaching world. So they're learning a lot and we're trying some new things and so it's going really well. Hatch also donated the robotics team a nice little $2,500 check.
Ms. Fontenot sent them a proposal for, I think, exactly what competition season was going to cost. And so that's a Canadian engineering company that's kind of been sponsoring us all along. So Ms. Fontenot sent them an incredibly well-written proposal for exactly what she... And because it's Ms. Fontenot, it was like $2,449. Like, we weren't going to round up and just say $2,500, you know? I mean, we were not going to cheat anybody out of that $49 or whatever it was. But she, they were really excited about what she sent to them because it showed how much the program's growing and that we needed new things and more advanced tech. So I finally got her that check this week.
So does that cover both the junior high and the high school? For their competition season?
Yeah, it's just for their competition.
Yeah, but I'm excited for them to go to LSU so that they can kind of see where they are and get a pulse on how the high school and where they are with other high schools. So it's really good.
Sounds good. All right. Any friends who want to say anything?
I won't make them.
All right. Moving on to the superintendent.
All right. Well, let's see here. Crisis management report. I did put a copy of this in your folder. And it is a requirement that the state has that I report to you that I have access to all of the crisis management plans. And so the first page is my report to you. The second page is where you see that I have linked all of the crisis management plans. And so we have district-wide plans that I have linked. And then the school plans are linked in the middle. And then I also had to provide to the state the agendas and the sign-ins where each school went over those plans. We did not send the plans because we want those to remain confidential. But I have a copy of every plan and James Wells has a copy of every plan. So I just show you that, that I have it. And then the last page there is just a copy of all the emergency contacts. I also had to send that to the state department. So I'm just sharing that with you. I put a copy of that annual report in here. So you have that, that we gave out to the businesses yesterday. And then the last thing I wanted to just take a minute to make sure that we hit. The final stretch is here for our sales tax. And early voting took place last week and the final vote is Saturday. And so we're here. It's been a very hot topic. I think social media is... I think the last time that Caldwell Parish put a tax of any sort was in 2007. And that was before social media. So a whole different ballgame this time when you have access to. And of course, I think you have great information out there where you can get the information out, but then sometimes you don't necessarily know what the information is. And it, I'll be honest, it's hard in my position because as a superintendent, I can't separate from my role as a superintendent and my person as Nikki McCann and who I am. So I do watch a lot of it or if I don't watch, of course, we talk, you know, we want to stay off Facebook, but then people send it to you. And you do want to know what people are saying because you want to know what's the correct information and what's the incorrect information. I will say a lot of our effort to be transparent, sometimes people appreciate the transparency and then sometimes your words get twisted a little bit. And I don't think that comes from a bad place. It just happens. And so I thought, you know, tonight would be a good time for us to just kind of try to set the record straight one last time. I feel like we've tried to put videos out. We've tried to put the resources out. KNOE emailed Kaylee this week a couple times and then today they ended up getting through to Janice. And she said, do you want to talk to him? And I was like, you know what? Sure. Send him, you know, so he called and he said, I can be there in 30 minutes. I said, come on, let's do it. So it's supposed to air. I have not seen it. Hopefully he captures, you know, what I was trying to say, but I'm going to give the spill here. But so in an effort to kind of answer the questions that were put out, the information, I had prepared just a little bit of a spill, I would say. Overall, how did this conversation get started? And I guess we'll just have to go back to COVID. So you think back 2020, five years ago, COVID hit. And since that point, we have noticed a decline in our enrollment. And that's not just Caldwell. That's just, as a matter of fact, this year, every district in the state of Louisiana lost enrollment except for two. Two districts did not. And that's partly COVID because COVID brought on the whole online learning and the virtual learning. That was never a thing before 2020. I guess it could have been, but it was a very, very minor. But since then, you have virtual and online learning. You have more homeschool, school choice and vouchers and then most recently the Gator program. And so you have kids who are moving out and parents have that option. And that's not a bad thing, but it has definitely impacted our enrollment. So you put all of that in place and this past year, we've lost about 50 students. And so with losing 50 students and you've been on a continual losing students, you do lose enrollment, you lose kids, you lose finances. And so then another thing that we've had to deal with since 2020 was when Hurricane Laura hit and our property insurance rose. And so at that point, we are getting less income and we're getting higher costs. And we're also not getting a raise in MFP. And so David and I looked it up. We've started, we've not received a raise in our minimum foundation program funding from the state since 2014. It's 2025. So in 11 years, we've not received any percentage in raises. And you think about, it costs more to educate a child now than it did in 2014. And so we're operating on the same, but with less students. But the bills just keep going further and further up. And so the bills don't go away just because the revenue goes away. And so we're constantly having to balance that. No secret, we've been fighting budget problems. Many of you in this room sat around this table last year with many of you. And we worked on a budget and we cut about $700,000 out of our budget last year. We cut positions, we cut programs, we wrote grants, we moved positions into grants. We wrote grants specifically to cover positions so that we could fund programs for our students that wouldn't be available if we didn't write grants. And David sent me the numbers for the amount of grants that we have in this parish and they're on my desk.
Ah, okay. Grants since 2019 have gone up 46%. I don't remember the exact number. I think it was around $3.2 million in 2019 and now we're probably lower, I think, in 2025.
So that's how much money we have secured in grants. So we're exhausting every opportunity to secure money that we absolutely can. And I surround myself with the smartest people I know right here who write grants and secure money and do everything possible for our kids. And it pays off because if you look in that annual report, our scores are going up in literacy, our scores are going up in math, we are making the list of most improved for the state in our league scores. We're continually going up because of the work that they do in writing grants and bringing programs into our parish. And so you've got all of that that you're working for, but we're still losing students. And so you start having conversations about, we know strong academic programs are what bring kids in. But we also know the strong athletic programs and strong technology programs and art programs are what keep kids here. And so that's where we tend to, we're focusing our attention. It also takes resources. It takes money. And so we start asking ourselves, how do we continue to grow and give every one of our students the opportunities they deserve? And that's what started leading us to the tax proposal. Again, we haven't announced for a tax since 2007. And that was a property tax. And y'all remember, we had the conversation. And we were like, property tax? And we're like, no, that only impacts part of your community. A sales tax is one that's more equitable because everybody pays for it. And not just everybody in Caldwell, people who travel through, people who come to shop here and people who pass through and buy gas here or stop and eat here. So it's a tax that everybody contributes to. And the beautiful thing about this EFID tax is it's not your food and it's not your prescription drugs. And so it's not going to hit people as hard as just a regular sales tax would. So a lot of conversation and a lot of thought went into these conversations and these thoughts before we decided to ask the public to help us with this. And so I want the public to know, we didn't just come with our handout as a first resort. We came because we've exhausted all of the revenue opportunities we have. It's a public school system. And a public school system is funded by public dollars. We have state dollars with MFP. We're required to spend 70% on instruction. We're funded with property tax and that's operation and maintenance. And we put that annual report out and you'll see how much it costs to pay the electric bills and to pay the buses and the gas and the gas for the buses and the gas for the buildings and all of the repairs for the buses. We put all that out there. We tried very hard to be transparent on that. We pay the salaries. We pay the benefits and the benefits keep going up. We pay the benefits for the retired employees. So I mean, all those things go into our budget that we have to pay for. So everything was exhausted before we decided, let's go to the voters. And the reason why we went to the voters is because we're looking at the bigger picture and that's that our public schools serve our community, our public community. And we know that at the end of the day, it's not just about our community, it's about our community's future and the fact that our kids are going to be our workforce. And we want a workforce that is going to be educated, that is going to know how to read, that is going to know how to do math, going to know how to work together and think critically, work as a team because they have been on a team or they've been a part of a club or they've been a part of some leadership group or they've been a part of an athletic group where they learn how to be a key player or be a supporting player. You know, all those things that you learn from being an athlete or being a part of a club or an extracurricular activity, that's the goal. And we also know that that strong, full academic experience is what keeps kids in school and is going to contribute to our, to our community overall. And we want our economy to grow, our schools have to be strong. So that's why we're asking for our community to pitch in that one cent and vote for this tax. Pitch it. That's what I got. That's what I got.
I would like to add one thing. And this is not something that we have taken lightly. It's not something that we came into thinking, you know, we can slide this by anybody. It's been out in the open. It's been transparent from day one. Anything the public wants, they can come and get. We presented it to the public. It's not one of those taxes, it's not one of those votes that, you know, that they tried to, you know, you try to sneak in and nobody goes and votes and hope it will pass. We put this before the people to give them that option. And everybody should know about what's going on with this tax. It's a tax for the children of the parish. It's a tax for the school system. We have a good school system. We have to keep supporting that system to keep it at the level that it's at. And all of my children have gone through the school system, all of my grandchildren, not all of my grandchildren, but everybody who lives here, my grandchildren right here. I have no regrets at all about the education that any of my children or my grandchildren have gotten in this system. We have a very good school system. And we're very transparent. Nobody's tried to sneak anything by anybody. This is something that you have to decide on your own whether you want to have a good school system that continues to be Excel and continues to be one that we can be proud of. And that's it.
Well, I just think that we need to support our children because if we don't, we will. I think that is very important. And I do want to say, I got to attend the breakfast yesterday and I'm very impressed with the impact report, annual report. It's very, very, I wished everybody to get this. And all the breakfast and everything was really nice. Really appreciate it.
One thing that I didn't say that you brought up was the survey that we put out. The survey that we put out was to generate feedback about a first step. So I do want to make clear that that's a first, like so the fundraising, we will never, ever get rid of all fundraising, okay? The allocation is designed to give everybody startup money so that they don't start from ground zero at the beginning. So everybody gets a little bit every year. I talked to the band director yesterday and he was like, I've already got plans. If I get this much this year, I'm going to update this group with equipment. Then I'm going to, next year I'm going to do this group. So it's planning ahead, knowing I've got a budget that I can work with in addition to the money that I raise with my concession stand. So it's not getting a rid of all fundraising, it's giving an allocation because you have extra money or you're not having to go fundraise for everything. You've got a little bit. The multipurpose building we're talking about was one that we felt like could reach our STEM and our art and our music and our powerlifting all together in one project. We're going to continue going back to the EFID board and back to the school board to prioritize because those needs are going to change. Three years ago, we didn't even have a robotics team. So when this project is finished, who knows what our needs are going to be, you know? I mean, we may have projects that have developed that we need to come back. And so the main objective is not whether your idea is on there or not at the time, is that the sales tax passes and all the money has to go to kids extras, extracurriculars and athletics. It's geared towards that, but the needs and the expenditures can change based upon the needs there. It's just it can't be used for something other than what it is. Did I say that clearly? Yes, I'm trying. I try really hard to say it clearly, but the feedback will always come back to the community. And I know there are trust issues. I do. I try really hard to be as transparent as possible. She brought that up, so I had to say it.
I agree. Instead, we didn't just come in here one night and say, hey, we want to do this. There has been meetings and meetings. And people don't realize how much y'all work and how much y'all do. They have no clue. I'm just saying, oh, yes.